In order, start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'm moved to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. HVAC project update.
Dustin was just here, but we spoke to him and they're hoping to kickstart the system soon, like today, tomorrow. I saw the engineers from Mitsubishi here too this morning, so I think we're getting really close.
So, good. All right. Approval of the minutes for June 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 5th meeting minutes as presented.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Utility permits in secondary roads department.
Uh, no utility permits. Continue the haul rock, we're gonna start pulling some of our guys off of home rock and start doing our other jobs and meeting down as well.
Ditching?
Yes, we got a lot of ditching to do, which also wasn't helped by all the rain, but yeah. So things have changed, but we're still moving along. Projects are going good, they're almost done with the one south of town. And then the one northbound, then Gerke will move up there, because they're done with Culver, so can't complain, things are moving.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, how about the contractors, when do you think they'll start hauling, or have they?
He is doing Red County's job right now, Mark Marietta, so they're gonna start once they're done with that. He was thinking early July.
Okay.
Like June, early July. And Gerke hasn't said when yet.
Okay.
All right, I skipped, um, the claims, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment dated June 12th, 2019.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, review and consider supplemental agreement for final design for Bridge 16095.
So this is our bridge on the highway just north of Gifford, between here and Gifford, over the south fork. It's the biggest bridge we got in the county, so we knew it was gonna be expensive. So far, we've paid them about nineteen grand for the preliminary stuff. And so this is their estimate to do the final design work, and it adds up to just about seventy thousand dollars.
Do we have a timetable? I know there was projections earlier, do you have anything updated, Taylor? On when the work, yeah.
Oh, it'll be, the work will be done next year.
Next year?
Yep, so they're doing this to fall in line, I can't, my letting date was either December or January.
Right.
So they're just kinda, they're keeping up with the letting date.
Okay.
The Alden Bridge, however, is not going as well, but that could be another discussion, other day.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement for final design for Bridge 16095 with Calhoun's and Burnt.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Community Services Updated Emergency Mode of Operations Plan.
There were a couple changes in here.
Okay, oh, you've got those.
The phone number for custodian contact information phone number needs to change to 641-939-8168.
We, I provided an updated copy to Nancy, just like minutes ago.
Oh, all right.
Correct phone number.
Okay.
And the other two corrections is another phone number for system manager contact information, and then number of users for access is eight instead of nine.
Okay.
And I will make a motion to approve the Community Services Updated Emergency Mode of Operations Plan with those changes.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion to approve Sheriff McDaniel's monthly report as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? This is for the month of May. All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 An approval of the fiscal year 2020 Harden County salaries.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 Harden County salaries as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the Recorder's Monthly Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Recorder's Monthly Report as presented for the month of May.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Request for Funding, Radcliffe American Legion Building. Angela, I will turn it over to the two of you.
Yeah, so I'll let Heath kinda give some back.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Heath Stoli, I'm the post commander of Legion Post 317 Radcliffe. Our current building was built in 1950, so it is now approximately almost twenty years old. The block on it's starting to deteriorate, it's got basement, got water issues, it's not handicap accessible. Utilities, there's not much installation, the building just getting old. It'd be better served for the community to have a new building that's more energy efficient and bigger, be able to hold more events and be handicap accessible. So, we've been in a capital fundraising campaign since last summer with the Jason Brown concert. We're now up to three hundred thousand dollars that we have raised for this building. And so we're looking to supervisors to provide some funding for the building so that we can apply for the State of Iowa Community Attraction Tourism Grant. The big catalyst is that, is that we've already got some money from the city of Radcliffe, from the Mildred Buesman Trust that she left to the town. And we need the supervisor's support to be able to apply for this grant, which will be about sixty thousand dollar grant, so. And that's, that's lost dollars in, so with your support, and we get this grant, we'll have to go and dump some for you. Very nice addition for the Radcliffe community. Angela, I think provided you guys with the funding list. You said that was updated, that was on Sunday.
Yeah, so, there's another, yep, so I sent this to Micah, um, Sunday morning, and we were sitting at eighty-two percent fundraised. And we've got, and we needed about seven thousand dollars, and we had like, what is it, forty-five hundred dollars come in since Sunday.
Three thousand yesterday, a twenty-five hundred dollar check on Monday, and another two hundred dollar donation, another seven hundred fifty, so we got about six thousand bucks this week alone.
Yeah.
Here's the copies of what the building design will be.
Thank you.
The roof pitch on that is a little steep, the roof pitch won't be that. That's just the way Jake Winter drew this up for me as a concept design, so the front, the pitch on the roof will not be that steep. The interior design was the, gonna be the final design.
So we're really close, is what we're saying. To be competitive for the grant, you want at least eighty percent raise before you apply for the grant, so the grant would come in and pay up to about sixteen percent of it. So we wanna have the full eighty-four percent raised. So what we'd like to ask for the supervisor is just a twenty-five thousand dollar loan to be paid back over five years. So four thousand each year, and then if and when they pay the first twenty thousand on time, you guys would forgive the final five thousand.
Okay.
That's kind of a wrap, I think it'd be a great use of our lost dollars, which is community development. He's using local labor, it's gonna be...
Blake Ritchie at New Providence is selling these buildings, structural insulated panel building system, super energy efficient. Heating and cooling costs will be minimal. Dwayne McDaniel out of Iowa Heating and Cooling in Ankeny's donating all the heating and cooling.
Really?
About a thirty thousand dollar donation there alone. Blake has worked with EPS there of Gratlenger, Iowa, they've donated thirty thousand dollars of the building to the project. There's a lot of support, city Radcliffe, communities surrounding want to see this building up and going. Another big piece that fell in place yesterday was confirmed is our local legend artist Larry Pearson is going to build us an eleven-foot tall stainless steel eagle as a centerpiece for the foundation of this new building.
Oh my gosh. That'll be awesome.
So it'll just be another attraction for the building. City Radcliffe, make it a unique building for Radcliffe and...
And that's like a sixty thousand dollar thing, you know?
He wants two hundred and twenty-five thousand for that horse sitting out front, so I don't, I don't know what he, his price tag he would put on this donation, but it is very substantial, so. It will be, it'll just be another nice piece in front of this new building for, for the community, so.
Right. Well, I would agree, I think we've held some drainage meetings there at the current Legion building, and I agree. It'll be a great project for, for Radcliffe. And like you said, the many uses for the community, it, it'll be a great...
And surrounding communities.
Right, it'll be a great draw.
It's gonna be, be able to seat three hundred and fifty plus in there, so it's, we're gonna make it about twice as big as what the building is now, so it'll be, it'll be a large venue for the county, you know, for that corner of Harden County to have a venue that big for weddings or meetings or whatever, so it'll be, it'll be a neat space.
Is the county gonna get to use it for elections?
You move them back to Radcliffe, that's...
What's the timeline, Heath?
The CATS grant is, the date to apply is July 15th.
Okay.
Working with Angela to help write that grant, she's very graciously agreed to help do that, which I am very grateful for, because it is a long process. So that is due July 15th, I think they decide within a couple weeks.
It's about a month, you know, turning around, so.
If we were, if we were selected for that grant, we'd be fully funded, the plan is to work, I'm working with Chuck Raska, the fire department. We think we can burn that building where it stands, get Isle Falls outdoor pumper trucks, put up a water wall cause it's close to the co-op building. Burn it down so we don't have to haul it all to landfill, because it's, the cost to haul it all landfill is just atrocious. The block that's there, then we can use as fill in the basement, and then start filling it in and doing site prep work this fall. Plan is build next spring, and then big, big, big grand opening Radcliffe place, July 2020. Trying to work on getting Senator Joni Ernst there, cause she's a veteran, maybe some other good name people, Thirty-fourth Army Band. It's gonna be a...
That'd be nice.
Black Hawk helicopter fly over, so, if you need to.
What, on this grant, Angela, is this, um, is, will this be awarded, I mean, the dollar amount, is this awarded to only one place, or is it a multiple awards?
They have like, three million dollar fund, kind of, it's what they set it at, but I mean, it's, it's quite bigger than that. And they just take applications every quarter, July 1st, obviously, the first, second quarter, so I think there'll be more funding than available. But yeah, they just kind of roll with it and just take.
Okay.
As many projects or as little projects as they want.
Okay.
There's an allotment in the first two funding periods, I think, for communities less than population of five thousand, so there's a specific allotment. The CATS grant, I think, go up to a million dollars for some of these bigger trail projects, things like that. But we're hoping we get in this first go-round, they got new money, small town, get in that beginning funding, and they'll pick us right away, so.
Yeah.
Then you want that trail through town, right?
Bring it back.
Apply again and...
Did they offer that constructive criticism then?
Yep, yep, so I sent them, so you had to send like an intent to apply, and so I've already talked to them about the project, and they were like, okay, you know, seems like it would fit our bill, so.
Good.
They know it's coming at least.
Would this project also help some of the other local legions that are struggling with facility needs and stuff like that too? To where there'd be some ability to utilize your facility when?
Yeah, if they, if they come to us and they need a space to hold a meeting, I mean, absolutely, it's, um... And we've, we've talked as Legion guys here about what we're gonna do as far as charges and, you know, things like, so we're thinking the new building for like wedding events will be five hundred bucks. If you're gonna hold a class reunion, it'll be a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars, like it currently is. We had talked about doing for Radcliffe Garden City, high school graduations, just doing, if they want to rent it, they can rent it, and if they feel they need to do a donation to Legion, they're... But that's, we're hoping, we went toward the Wachoma Community Event Center, they had the same thing we did, they had an old Legion building. The guys came together, they built an eighty by a hundred and twenty building, farmer donated the ground off the edge of town, gravelled all the way around it, they're booked. Oh, forty-five times out of fifty-two weeks of the year, they, they can seat five hundred, they told me it is not big enough, uh, they wanted to put an outdoor wedding venue. So I think the demand's there.
Right.
With the rental income, our plan is, because we're a nonprofit, then all that money just gets returned to the community, whether it's flags at the cemetery. Like to go back to doing scholarships for high school kids, I know I got one when I graduated high school from the Legion, things like that, all the money, we just roll back into the community, so. It's twofold that way.
Right.
Taylor, as the mayor, any comments, concerns?
I, we can give one more shout out to Mildred Buesman, a hundred and fifty grand. So when I first moved to Radcliffe, she was my next door neighbor, and she died probably, it was within a year of that, so I don't know if I'm the one that did her in, but... And, so I mean, she, she left the city a lot of money for Parks and Memorials, so I mean, yeah. And this is something, she was at the Legion all the time.
Yep, she was always there.
That's great.
So I just wanna give her respect one more time.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Heath, thanks, Angela.
Thank you. Any other questions for them?
Nope, I think it's a great program, and I think this is a good way to put local option sales tax fund to use. And as a payback, get it, get it going, get them building, paying it back at the end with a five thousand dollar forgiveness. I think that's a great plan.
I'd make a motion to approve the Radcliffe American Legion request for funding for the Radcliffe American Legion Post 317 Community Building.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, no, we have applications for fireworks permit, but I understand there aren't any for this, this meeting. Hiring of County Economic Development Director. We've had a couple of meetings with the various economic development boards in the county, which is Iowa Falls and Ackley. Kind of just gathering information, and it's something that the county has been funding those two, um, those two entities for a number of years, so. Would take any other comments or questions regarding that, as far as hiring a county position Economic Development Director? It'd be a full-time position for the county, I believe. Julie?
So, we have to understand, there's already two in the county, and now you wanna hire another one, and the county's gonna pay for it.
That would be correct. I mean, if, if that's what's decided, I don't, I, this is just kind of a culmination of the meetings that we've held, and in order to make a decision as to whether we're gonna do this or not.
Okay, but you need to keep in mind that Iowa is literally the crappiest state in the union, according to manure produced. If you don't believe it, you can go read the article that produced the waste of a hundred and sixty-eight million people in the state. I mean, it's, it's a fact, but that being said, how many people, how many economic development people are we gonna have? And do you, considering the outlook of, you know, this trend towards more and more poop, less and less diversity in agriculture, and, um... And they can't sell the report, but they still add more to the population. Good luck. Myself though.
I'll comment personally. I, I think it's a good, it's a good idea to have economic people, just like working with Angela. Being in a rural county, we gotta find ways to bring, bring people back to Harden County, keep them here, do these projects. Be able to have somebody that's knowledgeable for applying for the grants, finding the money out of our own county, you know, the state grants, things like that. The knowledge to write them, and finding ways to draw people back here to spend the tax dollars. So I think it's, it makes sense to have these people here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure the city would be in favor of this. We get a lot of help from management, Mark, I don't want to manage to help whenever we want, but I, I think we probably go on a county guide maybe a little more. Would it be to the, would then maybe reduce or drop the funding for Iowa Falls and Ackley?
I, I personally don't believe that dropping the funding for Iowa Falls is a prudent thing at this time. They've got Mark and the Iowa Falls Development Group have things going on. I know the Ackley Development Group, I've been contacted by city officials there with concerns about, you know, the sustainability going forward, so. That is of concern, so, but I don't wanna decrease the funding to Iowa Falls, because I do know they have projects in the works there.
And I, I don't think it's something where just one person in the county can serve all the communities with the size of Iowa Falls and, and the projects, like BJ said, the projects they have going on. It's not just one person that can, can do the entire county, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of a County Economic Development Director.
Okay, we have the motion, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Any other discussion?
What times, deadlines do you want this on? We had something here, but obviously, I don't know that we need a hiring date, I think we should just take job applications, we have a minimum of what, ten days?
That we need to post.
And do we wanna set a time for that to be closed, for the applications?
Ten days from today.
Could I make a, just make a comment or suggestion? I might suggest that we, I wanna say maybe delay this just a little bit. I would suggest that maybe we put together a committee or a task force to kind of look at how this structure is going to work, what kind of budget it's gonna have. You have a lot of countywide economic development organizations that aren't necessarily county, they're actually a private nonprofit. That does provide some confidentiality when you're negotiating with companies. Those are just things to consider. I think then looking at, at budget, what the expectations are, how you would want to divide, and certainly we're, you know, I'm working with Alden today, for example. So we're still willing to work with communities throughout the county and providing assistance we can, but just so that we know where we stand and kind of work through all those things. We've already put in the plan of, you know, budget for this next year, so. I guess I'm just saying, let's, let's plan for a little bit, make sure we've got what we want, so that we're not going back and retroactively having to amend budgets or fix the, oh gosh, we should've done that, I'm just...
As far as budget goes, we've budgeted in our current, or the fiscal year 2021 budget, starting July 1st, we have a salary, or we have money budgeted in our budget for this. I don't know, like they said, I don't know that, I mean, there's no talk of, you know, reducing the funding to Iowa Falls at this point.
No, and I'm not, my, my main concern is just that we get the position that we want defined, and, and so we know what the expectations are, what the, what the program of work is expected to be, and those kinds of things.
I...
Does this cover all that, the duties and responsibilities?
Yeah, I think we've...
What Mike Galaway provided, I'm comfortable with.
So... Yeah, so, I mean, I know this, you know, these conversations we've had with the economic developers, you know, we've kind of, some of this has already been kind of aired. And I'm sure there's gonna be some planning that has to go forward with, you know, Ackley and Iowa Falls. But I don't know that, that we need to do, have all of that in writing before, I mean, cause like, if we take applications for the next ten days, there's no deadline that we're gonna be hiring by, so there's still time to do some additional planning, so.
I would say we're still, we're still part of the alliance until the end of the month, also, and I don't see that ending.
No.
The 2080 that we have, but I do see that moving forward, we would still, if, if we still are funding the Iowa Falls side of it, and I'm just saying this regarding to what he said. That I would still hope that you would help, that they would help us develop exactly what we want as we go, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a building curve. But I also believe that economic development for Harden County should be a Harden County employee as well, too. And Dave was a good example of that. As other towns can piggyback on us, I know it's been working the way we have, but there's still the ownership of the county having the employee too. And, and like they said, I don't, I don't believe one economic developer can take care of this entire county, and that's what the good thing about having the, the alliance that we have. And the purpose of funding that as well.
Would you be saying a board composed of people from around the county, or is there already a board in place that looks at economic development matters?
Are you talking about a task force?
No, a board, who, who are you reporting to? Yeah, like a board of directors, a board of...
Well, the board, they would report to the board of supervisors.
They would report to us, it'd be another department under the Board of Supervisors.
New department.
I would be open to conversations about that, as far as...
I'm suggesting you could pick a half a dozen people from around the county that might bring some valuable input. Give us jobs. Her job.
Her job.
Her job.
Hers or his? His or hers? So, yeah, that would be the discussion we could have too. Because it's gonna be the individual towns that know what they're looking for, what assistance they're gonna need, and that kind of thing. So we definitely would be having conversations with individual towns when those issues come up anyways, so maybe having that task force would be a good idea. It's something that we can, we can look into. Okay, any other discussion?
This is, what deadline did you want for the applications to be in?
Um, I think...
I'm fine with ten days, or, I would, yeah.
I would be happy with that.
Okay.
So ten days, we can post this afternoon, and then it'd be ten, ten days. So we'd be talking... I, I would prefer to go the 24th, maybe.
Okay.
Just, just to make sure we get time to make the changes or whatever to this, to the job description and everything, get that posted today, and I would just, it would just give them another weekend, so I would say the 24th, would that be sufficient?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
You know, I might get to put that on the website.
Sure. Whatever you prefer.
Go ahead and post that under our jobs on the website. Okay, okay. All right. No other discussion, do we have a motion, or do we have, all those in favor, I guess, say aye.
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 All right. Public comments. Julie?
Uh, New Swine Capo, two thousand four hundred and ninety-six head, MJD Farm Sites, number seven one two nine four, owner Michael Dever, One Thirtieth Street in Ackley. Harden County, Edin Township, southwest quarter, southeast quarter, section fourteen, township eighty-nine north, range nineteen west.
section 14, township 89 north, range 19 west, four hogs underneath the level for regulation. All they present is a manure management plan, it's a plan, not a guarantee of what they're gonna do. Irresponsible legislature, not, not regulating this out-of-control part of agriculture. It's out of control, it's unsustainable, taxpayers paying subsidies for lists. If you think this isn't making a difference, think of water quality is not important. Go out to the lake today, look at the water, it's in the water.
I think I made the comment before about buying lake is a problem with chemical fertilizer.
I'm sorry, don't interrupt. It is a microcosm of what's happening to the water in this state, which flows down to the dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico. We have unregulated capos, no one's out there counting those number of hogs. And so, if you don't care about the water, and don't care about the legacy you leave for your children and grandchildren, then I, I feel sorry for you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes?
So I just have a few things from Hanson Family Hospital. When I was here last time, I noticed that our brochures that we had left up on the table were getting low, so just the time of the year, safety decon, I'll leave some information about that, the direct access for rehab services, as well as our 3D mammogram program that we have, and some details on that. So I'll put those up on the table today. A couple other, other exciting things happening, we are hosting a NICO student, which is Medical Education and Community Orientation from the University of Iowa. She comes from us, she's in medical school, and really wanting to experience what rural healthcare looks like. So that's been fun, she's with us for six weeks. She's doing rounds on the inpatient floor, she's doing rounds on the clinic side, as well as learning more about just the administrative side of healthcare. So, we welcome Morgan in that. And if you haven't been to our facility recently, we opened up the Coffee Addict Corner within the hospital, so there's a little coffee shop, it's open five days a week, and it's boosting consumer experience as well as employee morale. So we are having a ribbon cutting June 25th at 12:15. And I apologize, they don't have flyers out yet for that, but that is prior to the next time I plan to come, so again, that's June 25th at 12:15, and we'll have ribbon cutting for the Coffee Addict Corner.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, can I ask a quick question? How's the new addition to the Senior Life Solutions, how's the census there?
It's going very, very well, yes. I actually was able to help a patient back there yesterday after some of his care, and he was very happy to come back and just touch base with everybody. Last I knew, we were on the upper edge of filling that second track, so, you know, they're watching their indicators, and, you know, we may even have more growth from that area.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Other business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.